I call the meeting order for the City of Cullunga Planning Commission, joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where is it?
That was, that went to America, the family night out, and I don't know if it ever.
So we have to face north, or what's the deal?
There's a flag right here.
The post office?
There's a flag right there in City Hall, so we'll just.
Where do you begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is one change to the agenda. Under the roll call, the should say vacant under chairperson. She resigned about three months ago, and Sean already caught that, so it'll be corrected for the, for the minutes.
Yeah, we'll update that.
So roll call.
Vice Chair Stotterbrink, Commissioner Helmar, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Papietro, Commissioner Yaden.
Here.
And we have Sean here for the staff. Public comments under government code section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the items. State law prohibits the planning commission from acting on any non-agenda items. I don't see any public here, so we won't have any comments from the public. Information consent calendar, we need approval from the meeting minutes from July the ninth.
I motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Set it.
Richard, second, okay, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Aye. I abstain.
We have two abstentions, okay. Motion carries. Public hearing is, first item for, public hearing is going to be the adoption of the resolution zero two four P zero zero six to recommend to the city council consideration of proof of an ordinance number eight sixty-eight. It amends the planning and zoning code related to permitting vehicles washing facilities, gymnasiums, and drive-through facilities. Zoning text amendment application ZTA twenty-four oh three. Sean, you want to give us some information on that?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioners, this was a, an item that was initiated by the city council at a previous council meeting, and staff has been working on making some updates to the code. As times, you guys see, we have some housekeeping items, things that kind of change in terms of types of uses. And also, you know, we do have this motto of being the most business-friendly, you know, community in the state, and so we want to ensure that we're being as lenient with our, and helpful with our businesses as possible, but also protecting kind of that health, safety, welfare of the community at the same time. And so, there were, there were three items that were, that were brought up from the city council in terms of things to look at. And one was looking at expanding permitted uses for gymnasiums within the community, rather than, and right now gymnasiums are kind of coupled under a larger land use classification that encompasses, I think it was under, it's called theaters and cinemas. And so there's a lot of different uses that fall under that. And so what we did is scrapulate gyms outside of that to, one, create a definition for gymnasiums, and then also, at the request of the council, allow them as a permitted use in our manufacturing business light zone, with some caveats, if they're adjacent to residential, that we ensure there's not as much outdoor activity later in the evenings, not to disrupt the surrounding neighborhoods. So that's one item that we've done, so I provided information in regards to the definitions of a gym, and then also the additional development regulation related to no outside activity between ten and six a, ten PM and six AM when it comes to being adjacent to a residential district. Because as you know, there are some industrial areas along Elm Avenue that are, that are front residential district along that corridor. And so we just want to ensure that we protect those, those particular locations.
Sean, would, that fitness center where Keller Motor used to be, would that be classified as a gymnasium?
It would be considered a gym, it is in a commercial zone, so that's a little bit different, yeah, yeah. And one of the other items was related to vehicle washing facilities. The council wanted to look at making permits a little bit easier for vehicle washing stations, but also break up your smaller type auto detailing facilities compared to, like, our automated car washes and self-cleaning car, not self-cleaning, self-service car washes, similar to like what we have on Glen and Forest, and kind of break those apart, because there are different amounts of water used, there's different intensities. You have multiple vehicles coming through an automated car wash compared to a detail shop that may only have one at the most, maybe two cars at a time, depending on the size and scope of that, of that facility. So we've broken that up into two different components in terms of, for the vehicle washing facilities. And we can kind of go through the ordinance if you have any questions, we can go through those in detail as well. The last item was something actually that staff had seen, had noticed, and wanted, and addressed to the council, council concurred to include this as well, which we have, as we're seeing the dynamic shift in the way that retail and these quick service restaurants operate, everybody has drive-throughs now. And we currently have a prohibition on drive-throughs in our commercial, general commercial zoning district, which is really kind of this downtown core. There's also areas throughout town that are generally commercially zoned, and there's a prohibition on drive-throughs. And so that puts a significant restriction on trying to really entice future development to come in, and puts a, because general commercial is a pretty significant amount of our commercial zoning designations in town. So by removing that prohibition, we've kind of looked at where that would be, they still have to meet that requirement, they still have to have a conditional use permit. So we still look at them on a case-by-case basis, similar to what we did with Starbucks recently. So it's not that they're just going to automatically pop up, we still have to analyze them to ensure that they can meet the criteria of drive-throughs when they're proposing some type of like quick service restaurant, or any other type of restaurant. But you're noticing the drive-throughs are getting bigger and the buildings are getting smaller, because more and more people are picking up, they're using apps, they're not necessarily going and dining in. And so you're seeing less parking, you're seeing, you know, more of those long drive-through lanes like the Dutch Brothers of the world, and Chipotle's and those folks, where you see a lot bigger drive-throughs rather than the, the actual traditional sit-down area. You still want to provide that, but we're seeing that dynamic shift in the industry. And we're seeing that we'll go to conferences, talk to these retailers, and find out what their site requirements are, and a lot of it has to do, we've got to have a drive-through, we've got to have double drive-throughs, like, those are things that we maybe need to start looking at, but the double drive-throughs can still be addressed through a conditional use permit if they propose them, so we don't deny that. So with that, those are the changes, I did attach the draft ordinance, if the commission, excuse me, has any questions or any clarifications on some of the regulations, I'd be more than happy to, to go through those with you. So you'll see in the ordinance, in the red, kind of shows the changes, things where we've broken up the automotive, automobile, vehicle washing, self-serve and automated, and then now we have the automobile washing, hand washing in details. We've got two different types of definitions, and then we just cleaned up some language, and then we've also updated the land use table, so you can see where the vehicle washing and then the gyms, how they're addressed in certain locations, in terms of approvals. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any. And again, Vice Chair, this is, sorry to interrupt, this is a public hearing as well.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, any questions of Sean from the commission?
No.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing at this point in time, if anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this resolution, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Okay, Commissioners, the Vice Chair will entertain a motion for resolution zero two four P dash zero zero six.
I would make the motion to approve the resolution zero two four P dash zero zero six.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, question, Richard.
Yeah, I have some questions on that stuff.
Oh, that's why I asked earlier, okay, go ahead.
So this vehicle wash, you know, vehicle car washing thing, is this just something that you said the city council brought up? What is the city council's problem with somebody having a mobile detail car washing?
There's no issue with the mobile, it's not related to mobile detail car washing.
So who is, who is this relating to this car washing thing?
I'm not exactly sure if it's specific to one thing, I know there's, they probably have questions regarding that, the council could probably answer that. I'm not sure exactly who that is.
I read it to be believed that it was going to be easier for a.
For a fixed business.
For fixed business to do with a non-automated business.
Yeah, so we broke, we broke it up to basically break up, like, kind of hand washing detailing facilities compared to like an automatic car wash, at say like Chevron for instance. But it doesn't have any, it just has to do with fixed locations, so right now it requires a conditional use permit for certain locations, and so the council directed that they want to do it permitted by right. With, because we already have kind of additional development regulations, so as you recall in the zoning code, we have, you know, standard or specific regulations for specific type uses, where a lot of times those types of conditions or requirements can alleviate the requirement of a conditional use permit, because we may, we're addressing the potential issues that would come about from a particular type of use. And so that's, that's the mechanism to be able to try to reduce the amount of CUPs that they require when it comes to actually permitting projects. And rather than having to go through the process, pay large application fees, it allows, we can put it through development regulations, makes it a little bit easier for applicants and gets them through a lot quicker.
So this is going to be basically dealing with the two car washes, Chevron and.
Yeah, it really doesn't affect those car washes at all, it really would affect any future or existing fixed car washes that are doing like the auto detailing. Like more detailing, hand washing type facilities, not automated.
There was one over there right across to the east, if I get my direction correctly, southeast of the Ace Hardware, that used to be the.
And that's, and that would fall under the, under a self-serve and automated, so that falls under the same one, because you're going to have multiple vehicles coming through, and it's self-serve, you drive in, you put the coins in, and use your card, and then.
No, I was talking about, on the south side of the street, directly to the east of Ace, there used to be the Mexican restaurant, and some guys were doing some auto detailing in that space.
Oh, next, next door to that, is it probably next door to that car wash, okay. Yeah, it would, it would allow a little bit more of a, a pathway for them to do something like that, where it's not self, basically a self-serve automated type car wash facility.
Okay, so it's not anything to do with the mobile car washing?
No, 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 we still permit mobile car washes, but mobile car washes are supposed to be, you know, the washing, detailing, all of that needs to occur at the residence house of who they're going to, or. At like a business or something like they come and wash your business or whatever. But it doesn't, this is more of addressing fixed locations, and making it almost easier for permitting for fixed locations.
Any other, any other discussion?
No.
We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. So we'll call for the question, roll call please.
Commissioner Papietro.
Aye.
Commissioner Helmar.
Aye.
Commissioner Yaden.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Stotterbrink.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item on the, excuse me, on the agenda is consideration for approval of a tentative subdivision map, TSM twenty-four dash zero one, and site plan review of forty-six single lot family residential developments. So Sean, you want to give us a?
Yeah, on, in June, we received an application from WMN States LLC for a site plan review and tentative subdivision map approval about a proposed forty-six unit detached single family residential development located on the north side of Chardonnay Lane, near Merced Avenue, located in the existing Worthen Meadows master plan, formerly, I guess, currently known as the PG&E subdivision. The proposed project site is on eight point nine, eight point six nine acre vacant lot, that's currently zoned and designed, and designated residential single family with a planned development overlay. The staff report provided incorporates feedback from all our departments as well. The proposed project includes a subdivision and development of forty-six detached single family residential homes with three different single-story floor plans ranging from fourteen hundred and fifty square feet to eighteen hundred and fifty square feet. The proposed single family subdivision lots range from fifty-two hundred eighty square feet to ten thousand nine fifty square feet. Access to the proposed project would be provided from Chardonnay Lane, and the proposed project includes curb gutter and sidewalk improvements that would connect the project site with the existing residential neighborhood to the south. The general plan designation for this subject parcel is residential single family with the same zoning designation with the planned development overlay. And we have determined that the project is consistent with all development regulations for single family housing, as discussed in the report, and in terms of the overall, and consistent with the overall master plan that was approved quite a while ago for this particular subdivision. So, as we mentioned, the project includes forty-six new single family residential homes on eight point six nine acres, which is a residential density development of five point two dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the RSFP designation approved when the Worthen Meadows master plan was approved in two thousand and five, which allowed for smaller, smaller lot sizes with a slight increase in density. So in terms of the site plan review, the purpose of the site plan review is just to enable the community development department and the commission to make findings that a proposed development is in conformity with the intent and provisions of the municipal code and guide our building official in the issuance of building permits as well. The tentative map shall be required, is required for all divisions of land where land would be divided into five or more parcels. The tentative map review procedure is designed to ensure that such improvements in drainage, drainage, street alignment, grade and width, and sanitary facilities conform to city regulations and policies, and are arranged in the best possible manner to serve the public. So in terms of the subdivision map, tentative map requirements, we look at the, the single family development regulations, and we did provide a table here that talks about the standard, the zoning standards conformance for residential single family. And so you'll see that everything is pretty much in line with current code, however, you'll see that the lot sizes are a little bit smaller, as we explained. In the overall master plan, they allowed with a planned development overlay to reduce those lot sizes a little bit smaller. In terms of the citywide design guidelines for residential, they're a discretionary tool that's used with development standards and our zoning ordinance to guide a range of development types. The discretionary review under the design guidelines is conducted by members of staff, and at times the commission, to consider. The objective of the city guidelines is to preserve a small-town character of Cullunga in future single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and mixed-use development. So we look at items, and I won't go into too much detail on all of these, but we look at neighborhood context and fit, the building design, landscaping and fencing, and then we also talk about lighting, signage, and access, we also look at utilities, making sure that we have all the appropriate utilities. Most of the infrastructure is built out to this parcel, so it'll be an extension of a lot of those facilities. So in terms of lighting, I wanted to point out, lighting will be reviewed and approved by the Cullunga Police Department to ensure that it has adequate lighting for public safety. As part of the lighting plan for this project, the applicant will have the opportunity to potentially utilize solar lighting once a standardization plan has been approved by the city council. Staff's currently working on standardizing solar lights in the city. We have, there's a project where we're doing a lot of lighting, and I think we talked about it a little bit over there between on South Polk Street and between Louisiana and Thompson, that area in Houston Pleasant, that we were awarded a large grant through the affordability, the affordable housing sustainable communities program that built the Pacific State, Pacific apartments. And we're putting them in all, like, areas where there's no sidewalk, new sidewalks, curb ramps, and lighting, crosswalks, and as long as, as well as down forest, there's almost seventy new lights being put in in that area. And we've been working with a company, and really kind of vetting through the sustainability of solar lighting compared to dealing with the long process of engineering with PG&E, the cost of the maintenance and the monthly costs. And I, I see that Commissioner Hill is smiling, because I know years ago, he brought, he mentioned this about solar lighting, and I think about it every time that I, we're going through this process, but we're, we're going through the standardization of that right now. And hopefully, if approved, it will be something that will be imposed on this development as well. So it is a condition of approval, but we do need approval by the council to, one, get the standardization approved, and then also the sole sourcing of that particular product, which will cut down costs for infrastructure to put all the underground in, and it's basically putting in pedestals and putting lights up, so. And we're really happy with the, with the lights, the flexibility these lights offer in terms of dimming, and their brightness, and their coverage, and their spatial area they can cover. So we think they're going to be a good element for not only our trails that we're using them for, we've got approval for our trails, but we've also got components for street lighting, we have a few of them out now. We have one that we just put in the industrial park, it's a dual head, right at the entrance. There is concerns about lighting and almost trucks almost sitting in that median. So we put, we put one in there to see how it works, and it works great right there. And then we also have some of our list stations, and then we have about twenty out of the wastewater plant.
Need a better one on El Cora at night.
Oh, yeah. And one of, and just to kind of, I don't want to go too far off this project, but we, we all have also had conversations with Caltrans, and they're actually even on board with us using these on state, on the state highway. In some instances, with our, with our Highway thirty-three project coming in, with the crosswalks, there's no lighting proposed, but yet they've approved sidewalks, I mean, and crosswalks, they've approved us installing the solar lights for the lighting of those crosswalks. So that was a good win, so we've got a good partnership with the company we've been working with and providing us a lot of data. So hopefully this all works out, and it'll be a good move towards, one, owning the lights, but two, we won't, you know, we don't have to worry about the costly implementation of.
So Sean, is that the same lights that you're currently using like on the bike path?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so those will be, and you can go higher mass, I mean, you have higher poles, longer masts, so, and then based on how long they need to illuminate, how bright, they can do different power packs and solar, and then panels themselves, yes.
Is the chief going to be putting any of his candles out in that area?
Um, most, I haven't talked to the chief about exactly, he's putting together his phase two plan right now, in terms of where those lights are going. I've been in conversation with him specifically about his camera program and these new lights going in, to ensure that the lights are being, the poles are being built to the right level to withstand the additional weight and the, just a little bit additional power that the, those cameras will probably need as well. But he has a plan, I don't know exactly where he's putting all the new cameras, but he's got quite a few, quite a few more he's going to be installing. Yeah, so we're going to build the light fixtures and the power supplies to help accommodate that, that constant trickle of power from the streetlight and from the, from those cameras.
Will these have the charging units for cars, the EV charging units that we're talking about before?
Uh, that would actually be under the building code requirements, so we'll have to, we'll have to look at that, but if, I think it is, it would be potentially required to have them pre-wired for it.
Sean, I have a few questions before we open the public hearing.
Yeah, other than that, just to, you know, I always talk about environmental clearance on these types of projects, that this project is basically concurrent and, you know, compliance with the existing mitigated negative declaration, initial study that was completed back in two thousand and five. There's not been, unfortunately, a lot of changes in that area, and there was a big letter of map revision in terms of the stream bed alterations to get those properties out of the flood zones. So there's not a lot of changes that we do in terms of grading, there's not a lot of modifications that can be done to those lots, because they were all, a lot of those lots were all pre-graded, a lot of those areas were pre-graded based on the requirements of that stream bed alteration that was approved, yeah, so. Those, those elevation certificates will have to be confirmed, and that'll be done through the city engineer as well.
Few things, just correction on the zoning standards table required loss, I says six thousand, I want to correct that to five thousand.
Yeah, or the minimum, yeah, I'll look at that.
And the proposed is going to be five thousand, two, twenty-eight to ten thousand nine fifty, that looks good, but just want to make sure that that six thousand.
Yeah, that's just identifying what the residential single family zoning regs are, I, I just should have clarified that. I know Commissioner Yaden mentioned that as well, so, just to clarify, those are the residential single family standards. What's proposed is still consistent with what's been approved.
Another thing is, and Richard brought up with respect to the electrical, for charging stations. Another thing I had is there going to be a requirement, be the same answer for the solar.
Yeah, we, based on, based on building code, I think they have to be pre-wired, are you guys providing? Yeah, there'll be solar on the homes.
And is there going to be a requirement for a tankless hot water heater?
Depends on the code that you guys have, if it's required.
Off, off the look, but that's going to, a lot of those are going to be per the building code.
Okay.
We don't have any specific, like, regulations when it comes to like zoning for that kind of thing, so it'd be more, we'd default to the, or defer to the state code.
Okay.
I thought that was part of the building code, sprinkler system inside the solar and wobbles.
Sprinklers are required, but I would have to verify on the tankless water heaters, but I think that might be, might be required, and I have to verify.
I know part, or possibly part of that, or whatever they had to put those in.
Yeah, sometimes they do it anyways, so it's kind of, sometimes it's up to the builder whether they do that or not. Whether it's actually required by code, if it's not required by the building code, then we don't technically, we don't have anything to impose that on them, but if they choose to, we're not, we're not opposed to that.
The other, last thing I had before we opened the public hearing was electric stoves, or. From what I understand, state of California law on gas stoves. from what I understand, state of California law on gas stoves, you have to be electric.
That, as far as I know, is not, is not actually in law, is not law at this point. And we are going state, sticking with natural gas unless, I mean, considering the electrical, the electric concerns we have already in this community, gas is, we have available, it's cheaper. So I think from a, from a development standpoint, we typically see gas, as long as the infrastructure, as long as the, the infrastructure is going in.
Okay.
But there's nothing yet, I know there's been talks about it being changed in the building code for electric. There, we would still have an argument to change, to fight that, because it would make it very difficult here to do that, considering, you know, the issues we've already been running into with, with supply on power.
Okay. Open the public hearing for tentative map subdivision and site plan review for single-family residential development. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak either in favor of or against this proposal, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
That mic should be working right there at the podium. Let me get you on the record.
Sure, my name is Seidro Martinez. I'm a partner with the building company, Landmark Builders Group. We are a favorer, we believe it to be a good project for your city and we're excited for it. We've got some good feedback from the residents around here and so we're ready to go as soon as we get all the paperwork aligned. Thank you.
Hi, Don. My name is Robert Trejo. I'm with Ridge Valley Builders and one of consultants for great centers of property and stuff, so we're really looking forward for this subdivision. Our plans are, you know, hopefully we get everything approved and we can hopefully start turning here sometime September, continue on a few things, and then go into the future here for next year. Hopefully we'd like to have some houses already ready to close by next year, June of twenty twenty-five. And then from that point further, with the city's permission, we would like to move over to the next fifty-three lots in contingent or in continuance with these forty-six slots. So we're really excited to be on your side. But if there's any questions, we're here.
Thank you. Before I close the hearing, commissioners, any questions for the applicants?
Well, I'm not, sure if it's for the applicants, but just kind of in general, is the water treatment plant, sewer treatment plant going to be able to handle this extra load?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And then PG&E has no problem getting power out to all these houses?
No, that was, that was a, an issue we had early on when we were working through initially the, when they were acquiring the property from the prior owner, we had conversations with PG&E and the initial answer was no. And we didn't take that lightly. And so we worked through that and we've been able to confirm with PG&E that they're, they're able to supply the power for these forty-six units.
Okay, because I'd heard that they weren't able to supply power until twenty twenty-eight.
That's to increase the bank and increase the capacity larger. They, I did have some conversations with PG&E about power when it comes to residential. Typically residential, especially with now with solar, they typically are a zero-sum game in terms of their impact on the overall grid because of the timeframes of when the power is primarily used compared to like commercial, industrial, when it can be, you know, all the time, or it can be heavy loads at certain times or throughout the entire day, where residential doesn't, it doesn't seem to have as many, much of a problem. It's more of getting the, getting everything there and connected. I think that the, I'm understanding the Whirlworth Place Apartments is still having some issues with, with getting PG&E power. We've seen a lot of activity with PG&E out there, so they're a little behind on trying to get power places done and ready to lease out. I think that the Pacific Apartments started a little sooner because they had, they were basically a net-zero project. Everything was electric, no gas, and they were, they had solar to offset a lot of their demand.
So will gas be provided to all these new homes that you guys have put in?
So this subdivision, currently we have no gas. It's going to be all electric.
All electric, okay. Because I know some people, like I know me in my house, I like to have an option of gas and electric, so I can go either way.
Sure.
It's always a nice option, but, you know, we're trying to get away from fossil fuels.
Right, yeah, it's kind of been the push up and down California, and so a lot of the engineering just comes already, hey, if we can do all electric and we're not, you know, we're going to save some money there on the infrastructure as well. We're going all electric and the solar, this goes on, this provides most of it for the home. So the homeowner is able to save some money there monthly on the, on the road.
How many panels are going to be on those homes?
It depends on the size of the home and the load, so the engineers again will calculate what, what they expect the load to be and then they'll appropriate with that, or they'll communicate that with the solar company and then, you know, they'll, they'll.
Using one solar company or how's that?
I'm sorry?
Using one solar company or how's that working?
Uh, we're using one solar company, we're using Sunrun, so they'll be the provider out here. So basically they, depending on the home, they're going to run from fifteen panels to, if the buyer wants to add more panels, they can add panels at their discretion, but we'll follow what the guidelines are to the, to the Title twenty-four account for that.
Will these panels be leased or bought?
Uh, they're actually, it's going to be, depends on the homeowner's, we have powers per agreement, so they have the option to buy or they have the option to lease.
Because I've heard horror stories where people buy these houses, they only have X amount of panels and then they want to upgrade and it's like pulling keys to try to add more.
So far we haven't, we're doing another developments, we haven't had any trouble as far as running into that situation there, but they do have the option.
Yeah, here, what I call wine country, I've heard of people out there that have X amount of panels and they want to add to it and they had difficulty doing it.
Yeah, and they have those issues right now because the laws change according how the power is purchased and credited towards the homeowner. So if you add panels now, it's a totally different system, the way that they calculate what you're getting rebate from PG&E. So that's the more of the issue, whether if you buy them now, you're going to cancel out your old contract, you got to go with a new one, well, the new one is not as good as the old one, so that's where they have their issues. So now people are getting in you where the laws, the law now, so they're not going to have that conflict that people have before.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Well, I had Sunrun when I was in Poshinay. I didn't have any problem when they wanted to add more panels because, you know, we needed more panels because we had a pool. The problem that I had with my, with, when Sunrun came out is that when they built the house, they didn't have a big enough pan, you know, electrical panel.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so they had to add, they had to do add that on, and that was a cost to me on that deal. And you're going to, I mean, you're going to guarantee that the panel, your electrical panel is going to be big enough, they need to add on, right? I mean, because if you have too small a panel, then you want to add on.
They have an inverter on the system, the system, for example, is a ten K system. The inverter is capable of converting the power, changing it up to ten K. If there's just something being excess of that, they're going to have to change that inverter as well. So it all depends on their demand. It's not going to be common for someone to pay for an extra inverter for futures if they're not, they don't know about, especially when they're buying a home and getting qualified for the home, because their payment is going to change and the qualification standard is going to change according to if they're going to purchase these panels, if they're going to rent them. And if they're going to rent them, maybe I can see the company doing something like that because it's easier for them to come out panels, but if they're going to purchase them, you know, it's, it's up to the buyer to negotiate that at a time, but it's just going to be an inference of, of cost if they want to go ahead and upgrade that panel to expand them twenty percent, thirty percent, whatever they think their futures may be. They definitely have that option, nobody's going to tell them no.
I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but will the breaker box have enough lengths where if you want to add a jacuzzi, a pool, RV, electrical, will they have extra spots so they can put extra breakers in for extra stuff?
They're going to have plenty of extra, we're using a two-hundred amp panel, so they, there's plenty of extra spots for any future additions to the home.
Because nowadays, that's kind of important too.
Yeah. Huge two-hundred amp panel there, so, yes, answer that, yes.
Any other questions?
I'm saving mine, Sean.
We'll close the public hearing. At this time, the vice chair will entertain a motion from the commissioners.
I think Rock, Rock may have had some questions.
You give us a chance to talk after you talked tonight.
Earlier you did. So Sean, one thing that I'm curious of, now I'm hearing, I've heard two things now of concerning infrastructure. One is no powered streetlights. The second one is no gas lines in that neighborhood. I guess we're all getting old, but is that, is that the new thing now?
I don't, I don't necessarily think so. It's hard to tell like in this community. The power issue is going to be temporary. I've talked, I've been in contact with PG&E for a long time. It's getting a little better now, but any large user, that's where you start getting the challenges. That's where we ran into when we were permitting cannabis operations and, you know, we were running into those power issues. We didn't think, we never really ran into problems like that in the past. So it was to a surprise when we were being, when they were saying, well, you need to be doing this and this and this and this, and it's like, we've never done this before. We usually only have capacity issues. So, and that's in the works. I'm not sure what's taking so long to get the upgrades, but there, it's always changing in terms of what's available. In terms of gas, I don't know what the, I don't see the policy changing. We've been able to keep our gas rates lower, inherently lower than what people would be paying with PG&E or with SoCal gas. So I think it's an added value in this community, having natural gas, and so I don't see that changing. I think it's just, it might be in terms of this particular development, it may be less costly because you don't have to put the infrastructure in.
Well, I guess, I guess the concern is that, you know, years ago we talked about putting, putting purple pipe systems in so that they were at least in, right? We can't utilize them today, but someday maybe we could. So we never, we never, we kept pushing that off. Then now we see a development coming with no gas lines and it just seems like, I understand the cost of that upfront, but I also know the cost of it to retrofit. It just doesn't, you know, it's like what we're watching right now with Unwired, doing the same thing. It's a little concerning not to have it available upfront and that one development is going to be locked in for people that want a gas range to say that, that development is now out of play to them. It just, it's just a little odd to me, so.
I agree with you.
But I understand the cost and, and I, you know, and there's probably some credits for it, some things like that, so it's probably just something that I'm not used to yet.
Yeah, this is one of the, you know, first ones that you don't see. Commercially, you typically won't see gas if they're not using gas, right? But it's not necessarily a requirement for gas from what we can gather, so they can go full electric if they want to go full electric.
The other one was the street name, and I should have went the other way across the street where you used to be. Is that one street, is that a circle all the way around in a?
Kianti Circle, yeah, yeah. Kianti Circle, yeah. The little, the little road going into it is a separate road, but then it's going to be one, it's just one circle, yeah.
And then the, the other one was the, those lots and the lots that he's talking about to the, to the west of there, are those all to rough grade only?
So the lots to the west surprisingly were under a final map and actually finished and they have individual APNs. Those are pretty large lots. The developer at the time, actually when we originally moved out here, they were planning on building larger homes, you know, three-plus-thousand square foot homes on these large ten-to-thirteen-thousand square foot lots. And so they were moving so quickly, you know, the market was really good for a short period of time and I lived right through that, that they'd planned to move forward, they finished the lots, they got approval for it, they had a, the subdivision agreement in place, all the bonds, there's current bonds on the improvement still to this day on those individual lots. So we've had a lot of conversations with the owner, who's the same, the same developer in terms of how to handle those existing lots, whether you try to, you know, increase the number of lots, because we know, people like large lots, but if you're building fourteen to a hundred, fourteen to eighteen hundred square foot lots on a ten-thousand square foot lot, we know what that might turn into in terms of having too much space, too much landscape space, you know, in these, on these lots. And so there might be some other opportunities to kind of, you know, whether we try to reduce the lot sizes, increase the density a little bit, but we don't see it's going to have any substantial impact out there, because everything else is between six to, you know, seven-thousand square foot lots, all the ones that Dear Horton built and the other ones further to the west.
So these lots here, are they to rough grade?
They should be at rough grade, yeah, because when they did, when they started moving dirt, when, when they did all the, they had to do a lot of earth moving when they did the letter, when they actually did the stream bed alteration, when they dug out the creek and they moved dirt, they, I think majority of it should be at relatively its grade.
But no underground's been done in there?
No.
Okay.
So all the infrastructure needs to be put in.
Then my last pet peeve is I notice, because I always check for the trash can language and the fence language and all that to make sure that the gates are large enough to get trash cans and all our stuff through them. But does our code enforcement also include trash cans on the street over twenty-four hours? Is there?
There, there is a code section regarding trash cans. They're supposed to be behind the front yard setback of the home.
Which is the fence?
Technically, it's the, it's the, behind, it can still be in the front yard. There's a lot of discussion in the past with city council about this, and this goes back many years and many iterations of trash cans. It does have to be back within a certain timeframe, but it only has to be placed behind the front yard setback, which could be, you know, the, the front of the, behind the garage, front of the garage. So it doesn't have to be behind a fence. There was a lot of discussion about not everyone has a fence, some people have too small gates, then you have to address alleys and how do you address alleys and not every alley has a fence, some of them still have a little metal stand where the metal trash cans used to go, so.
But I think we did address the, the size of the gates though, so that, because if you have two different sized waste cans, both the, the new gates are supposed to accommodate.
Yeah, and I think we have that as a condition, yeah.
I just don't know that it's sized. I know we ran across that at one point.
We can, I can make sure that the language is, is correct where it can fit the city issued cans. We can, that's something we can definitely clarify.
That's all I have, thanks.
Any other discussion from commissioners?
Yeah, a quick question real quick, are they going to be putting the cable system out there? Because the only thing it really affects is like Calneva to run internet out there. Will they be running that system?
I, I actually, I think I've reached out to them, they're actually talking to Unwired about putting, I think they're, Unwired is putting in all the underground out there.
Right, so, yeah.
They're probably talking with AT&T and other utilities as well.
Right, I was just wondering if they're going to run the cable, just so you can have other options.
Yeah, so they'll have all the conduits and all that in there for telecommunications as well.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, I should entertain a motion for resolution zero-two-four P dash zero-zero-seven.
Make a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Sorry. I'm sorry, who, who made the motion? Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Helmar?
Aye.
Commissioner Yaden?
Aye.
Commissioner Papiaatro?
Aye.
And vice chair, stop and break.
Aye. Motion here.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and/or potential action items, reorganization of the planning commission, Sean, I'll turn that over to you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. So the process for selecting the chairman and vice chairman occurs annually with the sitting commission or when there's kind of a change in commissioners as well. And so we follow the process of a nomination and a second of one of its city members and then a vote. The person receives a simple majority of the vote, he or she becomes chairman, chairperson. The same process is then conducted for vice chair. So at this time, we'll take nominations.
What do we take the nominations?
Accepting nominations.
Accept the nominations, oh, I'm sorry, for chairman.
Chairman. I nominate, stop and break.
I'll second. All right. Roll call.
Roll call.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Papiaatro.
Aye.
Commissioner Yaden?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmar?
Aye.
And chairman, stop and break.
I accept, thank you. All right, next is for the vice chairman for the commissioner, we need a motion for nomination for vice chairman. All right, uh, next is for the, uh, vice chairman for the commissioner, we need a motion for a nomination for vice chairman.
I'll nominate, uh, Mr. Hill.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, um, motion on the table, so roll call please.
Sorry, I'm writing this down. This is not my normal job.
But you're doing it well.
Thank you. All right, so we have a nomination for Commissioner Hill for vice chair. By, uh, Commissioner Papiaatro, Commissioner Yaden?
Second?
I second, yes.
I guess that was a roll call, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
And chairman, stopping break.
Aye.
Vice chair. All right.
Okay, uh, next order of business is department reports, um, CD, communication, staff announcements.
I have none.
Commissioner announcements.
I just, Sean, two things, uh, not that I'm really too pressed for, but I don't think I've got a, one of those forty-eight dollar checks in a long time.
Really?
Yeah, not a big deal. The other one is though I tried to get on and do that, sexual harassment or whatever the heck we're supposed to do. Are we supposed to do that?
Yeah, every year.
I couldn't, I couldn't get in, and so, so I called, I called the number of whatever and left a message and asked her to call me or email me password or something, so I haven't done it yet.
I had to do the same thing, I got a pass.
I saw your notes.
So I went through and I did that, that two hours, two hours, every year.
It is a pain, isn't it?
It's a law, but there's a lot of laws that are a pain.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, I, that's probably the most important one, I need to be up, I need to get up to date on that.
Sean.
It's also some of the worst training that I've ever gotten. You need to get a different contractor.
Vice chair, Hill.
Why can't we have a class, this, this, you know, this, you know, like, like we used to do in prison, we used to have a class, you know, sexual harassment class.
And get everybody all, you know, registered in and, and take, take all at one time, it's just, because like you say, it was hard as hell. I mean, I mean, and my wife is pretty, pretty much computer generated, you know, smart.
I don't, I don't disagree with that recommendation, however, trying to get everybody here at the same time, the cost involved, I don't know, practical.
Well, yeah, but we usually have a pretty good, if we want to get people, we can usually, if you put it out there ahead of time, find out when people are going on vacation. And just, you know, set it up so we can all get it done at one time and, and not be so, so difficult.
Well, you're meaning all, all, just us?
Well, maybe, maybe the people, you know, the city employees.
The city employees.
Yeah, we, we do it, we do it online too. Yeah, yeah, and we, and we use, we've actually done it, we've done it in person before too, so.
Uh, actually, I prefer to just do it online, like, like, you know, three o'clock in the morning or something.
Yeah, that way I can walk by there, run us two hours, come back and take the tablet.
A lot of us are sleepy through. We have that, uh, it's just a, just a.
Thank you. I'll put it in the suggestion box.
But I am thinking about doing it.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up on both those for you.
I'm surprised you haven't got a notification.
That's why you're not getting checked.
I, I haven't, I haven't got any.
I mean, I can sign into my water meter now, that's pretty cool.
Good.
And then there's like a username and password for me to get in, to get this information?
And, and it's not the same one as the sexual harassment one?
Right.
No, it's a different sexual harassment.
So where do I get my username and password?
We'll get that sent to you.
Okay, any other, uh, comments or complaints or recommendations for the good of the order? Hearing has seen, uh, being adjourned, thank you commissioners.